Welcome Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I call this special meeting of the, sorry, yes, special meeting of the Albany City Council for April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, order to order. Council, Vice Mayor Lopez, could you read the acknowledgement statement?
The City of Albany recognized that we occupy the land originally protected by, protected by the Confederate villages of Lishan. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must take, make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloney Tribe. We thank them for their contributions which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationship with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home.
Thank you Vice Mayor. City Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Hansa Romero?
Here.
Councilmember Jordan?
Here.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Here.
Mayor McKee?
Here. With that, we'll move to our special meeting item, the study session on the annual sugar-sweetened beverage tax study session. That's a mouthful there. Will staff be starting with presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor McKee. I do have a PowerPoint for tonight's study session. I'll just wait for the City Clerk to bring it up for me. Start. Oh, you got it. Okay, thank you. You can go to slide number two right away. Thank you. So, the goal for this evening's sugar-sweetened beverage tax study session are for the council to receive a status update on fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four funded programs, conduct a study session to receive input and recommendations for the expenditure of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five proceeds from the SSB tax, and provide staff with a preliminary prioritization of items to be funded with the tax proceeds in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. You can move to slide number three. So, in November two thousand and sixteen, Albany voters approved Measure O one, a general tax on sugar-sweetened beverages. Per the ordinance language, the council is to hold a study session annually to receive input on, and recommendations regarding the expenditure of proceeds from the tax, and solicit recommendations from several organizations, including the City's Parks Recreation Open Space Commission, Racial Inclusivity and Social Equity Commission, Transportation Commission, a designated representative from AUSD, and individuals with specialized expertise in areas such as public health issues and programs relating to diabetes, obesity, and sugar drink consumption. So, the council approved the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four sugar-sweetened beverage tax expenditure plan, which includes expenditures for continued funding for the Crossing Guard program, Healthy Me Music program, the Bike Safety program, Albany Swims, Move and Groove, the Bike Link Lockers access hubs, for a total of two hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety. Progress reports received for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four funded programs were attached to your staff report as Attachment two to five, and provide a little bit more information on each of the programs and their activities to date. An overview of the current expenditure plan budget shows that fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four expenditures are estimated to come in below the amount allocated, but will be higher than the projected revenue of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, a different, which is a difference of approximately sixty-two thousand dollars in expenditure over the projected revenue. Slide six, please, thank you. For the use of SSB funds in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, recommendations have been received from this, from the City's Parks Recreation Open Space Commission, Transportation Commission, and Rise Commission, as well as the Albany School District, and they're attached to your staff report as Attachments six through eight. Since the posting of the agenda, council has also received public comments regarding the use of the proceeds, and they have been uploaded to the agenda packet as well. There is ongoing support to continue currently funded programs, so that's all of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, I think you can move to the next slide, to all of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four funded programs at AUSD, and for the Crossing Guard program, as well as the Move and Groove event. New recommendations include the allocation of funds for a sand volleyball court, an installation of a water bottle filling station at Ocean View Park, installation of inclusive swings at Ocean View Park and Memorial Park, and encouraging active transportation with new Saha project residents, and a new Giltrack Community Farm field trip program for AUSD students. So, included in the slides here, you have all of the programs that have been recommended, recommended for next fiscal year, and there's an attachment as well in your staff report that outlines all of the programs. So, the city's finance department is estimating fiscal year twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-five revenue to be about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Per the voter-approved ordinance, the SSB tax is general fund revenue that the city council aims to apply towards specific purposes related to health and well-being, and approved expenditures are incorporated into the city's annual operating budget. Any unspent funds are available to fund general operating expenses, and if unspent, roll into the general fund, fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. As such, there is no surplus of unspent funds, as this is general fund funding that is otherwise fully committed. While staff track revenue and expenditures related to this funding plan, these funds are not accounted for outside the general fund, as there are not a special revenue source. Allocating more expenditures than revenue in any given year will exacerbate any potential budget deficit, reducing the city's general fund, fund balance available to cover other core services. The Financial Advisory Committee also made a recommendation, and they recommend that the city council allocate no more than what is budgeted as revenue in any given year, especially in a year where there is a projected budget deficit with additional consideration to the financial uncertainty arising from events such as the closure of Golden Gate Fields and the rising cost of pension benefits. The city councils should also not consider previous years' surplus as additional funding to be used in future years. So, the chart here shows the estimated revenue for fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five. As of February two thousand and twenty-four, there is a decline in SSB revenue, which is most likely due to a decrease in sales. The projected revenue is lower than originally anticipated, and the estimated fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five revenue considers the decrease that we're experiencing currently in revenue, so it has been adjusted accordingly. Finally, the next, our next steps is spending, staff's next step is spending direction provided by the council. Staff will work to provide a more detailed cost estimate on projects and programs that are given a high priority by the council for inclusion in the city's budget. That concludes my presentation. If you don't see any questions?
Thank you. Looking to councilmembers for any questions?
Sure. I'll fulfill my traditional role. So, over the last many years, until last year, well, let's see, going back to two thousand and eighteen, the revenue's been two hundred and sixty thousand or above, up to two hundred and ninety-five thousand in FY twenty-three. Do we have any idea why it went down in twenty-four and why it's expected to go down further in twenty-five? I mean, so it was two hundred and ninety-five in twenty-three and two hundred and twenty-five in twenty-four, it's pretty dramatic.
We've reached out to our, to our vendor who is collecting the tax for us, and they, they will do a little bit more analysis for us, but right now, the likely reason is a decrease in sales of, of sugar-sweetened beverage tax, uh, sugar, sugar-sweetened beverages.
Yeah. I mean, that is the goal. I'm just surprised after eight years, all of a sudden, it's dropped so dramatically. That's what I have at the moment.
Well, and I can imagine without the sales at Golden Gate Fields, that that's, I would be curious to know how much of that sugar-sweetened beverage tax is coming from that facility, because, well, you know, that could be really very impactful, so.
And we can see that from the top thirty-five producer of the tax, that there's a decline for all of them, and it's pretty equal, you know, in percentage, all of them.
Not seeing any other questions from council. We'll open it up for public comment, and as usual, we'll start here in the council chambers.
Good evening, City Council, staff members. My name is Astraea Seinberg, and I'm Chair for the Parks Recreation Open Space Commission, and it's been really lovely to get to serve there and be on the commission, so I'm here supporting the recommendations that we've put forth and encouraging the council to consider these recommendations. I brought today the Parks and Recreation Master Plan just as a reference for how these recommendations really tie into some hopes and aspirations that we've already established as a city. So, just in terms of our vision for as a city, I just want to remind us that we've set out to, to work towards space, open, parks and open spaces that will continue to evolve to meet the needs of people of all ages, abilities, genders, cultural and economic backgrounds, existing parks, and existing parks and open spaces will be maintained to meet and respond to the interests of the entire Albany community. And I thought it was really interesting, as, as a commission, as we were discussing these, and really came to a unanimous approval behind the three recommendations of a volleyball court, the water fountains, and the retrofit swing, that they're actually all priorities here in this plan. So, just as one example, I had it, and most popular in program requests, in our, from our most popular program request in the master plan, outdoor play equipment for all ages and abilities is identified as number seven, and as far as most popular amenity request, more water fountains and bottle fillers is number two. And there's also a reference to more inclusive, extra, or more inclusive playground equipment at Memorial Park, and so all of these are what our recommendations reflect. We did decide to put them forth in our order of priority, just in case you do kind of need to balance these recommendations among commissions, of course, which is the reality. And I, we really hope that these recommendations address some of last year's concerns, such as being multi-year projects. We're confident that these can be done within the year. So, well, thank you for your time, and I, I guess, we can answer any questions if it's needed. I know Mark's here, who's been really helpful in researching these and bringing forth some, like, I guess, strong proposals, but also that are very rooted in what the commission's been working on the past few years, so thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello. Hi, my name's Emily. I'm a fifth grade teacher at Marin Elementary. I'm a resident of Albany, and I'm a farmer at the Giltrack Farm. So, I'm to speak in, on behalf of the farm's proposal. They are already benefiting the community, and I wanted to talk about my relationship to the farm. So, when I arrived in the U.S. as a new immigrant in two thousand and twenty-one, visa restrictions meant that I wasn't able to work or travel, and I was worried about social isolation, and participating with the farm gave me a sense of community and purpose as a new arrival. And then kind of got a nice full circle moment when I was able to take my students on a field trip there in the fall. They grew in their understanding of food systems and the land, and they also built their community and stewardship skills. I have some quotes from the students which help me see how it fits well with the, this proposal. One child said, "It opened my mind about eating different kinds of food." One child said, "It was fun to explore with friends and eating really healthy yummy food." One child grabbed a sprig of mint leaves and said, "I'm gonna take this for my snack on the walk back to school." And another used a leaf that they had harvested in an art project that we had already begun. Another student has continued attending every Sunday as a way of accessing healthy food with her family. I know that the middle school also just took a field trip to the farm, and I heard of them making bouquets and harvesting herbs. I think that the farm can further benefit the community through this proposal, because all classroom teachers I've spoken to at Marin have said that they would be interested in running a field trip to the farm. I know that middle school was surveyed, and they showed, and high school, and they showed a strong interest in that, too. But most of the teachers in my school haven't taken a trip yet. I think a more explicit curriculum-aligned field trip offering is going to make it more attractive to those teachers who haven't been yet. Across the board, across elementary, middle, and high, they've particularly shown an interest in making connections between a field trip to the farm and teaching about the history and culture of the Lishan Nation. I think that the ripple effects of the field trip, like that student who brings her family there now every Sunday, are going to be amplified if children go over a number of different years, because they'll get a more solid relationship with the farm, and they'll be able to understand it as a community resource, and also understand that nature of, like, a long-term relationship with the land and how it moves through the seasons and the years. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
You probably don't often have commenters roll up to the podium. I'm Kim Trutain, the Communication Specialist for Albany Unified School District. I'm here, of course, in support of a number of programs that have been funded by sugar-sweetened beverage tax revenue. Because you have the letter from our interim superintendent, Donald Evans, I am not going to speak at length, but I just did want to bring forward the fact that when Dr. Evans prepared those remarks, we did not know that you were facing a situation of declining revenue, and I realize that that puts all of you in a, a much more difficult position in having to make all of these decisions about what programs to, to fund. Of course, the school district is very interested in having the Crossing Guard program continue at its current level, because that makes all of the difference in the world for our students to be able to cross safely and use active transportation to get to and from school. We've also really enjoyed the Healthy Me program in the district. It's a very, very excellent program, and it targets young kids when their eating habits are developing, and we were happy to be able to find at least temporary, one-time funding for some of that, so that we can continue the Healthy Me program in our schools. And of course, the Albany Swims program is, is, well, it's very dear to my heart. I think that water safety is extremely important, and, and this is one program that really is a terrifically high priority as we try to make sure that all of the kids in the district are water safe. And as a matter of fact, after I speak, I hope that our Director of Aquatics, Drew Nelson, will come up and say a few words about the response of the program that he has seen there. Also present here tonight is our Chief Business Official, Jackie Kim. I just wanted to let you guys know that if there's any questions that you have, if we can clarify anything, please let us know. Last but not least, I want to mention the bike rodeos that you have funded for years, and that again, provide just an invaluable service as we get all of the students in Albany bike safe and able to use active transportation as their mode for getting to and from school. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, everyone. My name is Drew Nelson. I'm the Director at the pool. This is our second year doing Albany Swims. The first year was great. We had a lot of participation. Year two, we're about the same participation, maybe more. I would like to highlight that I could imagine if we had enormous amount of money to spend, we could fill every spot that we had. Generally, once they get into like a level five spot, that's where we say we bring it, let the other people get a spot. The more money for Albany Swims, the better, because drowning is a major life-changing event that we never want to have happen to anyone. So, the more we have for that, the better, and such like that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is Akani James. I'm speaking on behalf of the Giltrack Community Farm. I'm also a lifelong resident of Albany, graduate from Cornell Elementary, Albany Middle School, Albany High School, and I just wanted to say, on behalf of the farm, you know, we really would appreciate this funding for this program, especially coming from the sugar-sweetened beverage tax, when it's all about promoting the, the health of our residents, and especially our children in the community. For the money to come out of that and go into a community farm where we're actively growing organic, fresh vegetables, you know, to the community at, you know, donation-based costs, this is a really, a really important aspect of health in the community, and not just on body health, but also on social health as well. You know, I found the Giltrack when I was, in two thousand and twenty, right after I graduated Albany High School, and it was, you know, I've been there ever since for the last four years, every week. It is a life-changing place. It's taught me so much about how to grow my own food and how to take agency in my health, whether it's, you know, food as medicine, as herbs as medicine, right? And for me, if I had the ability to go to Giltrack and get that exposure when I was in elementary school, middle school, or high school, I mean, it would have been, made that much of the difference in my life, and, and I really think getting through to the community members and residents through the children is the best way to do it, because if a kid goes, comes home from school and says, "Mom, Dad, Mom," like, "I went to the farm today, we learned about growing vegetables and fruits and herbs, like, you know, I want to be healthy now," you know, that's, that's the way we can get the entire community healthy and behind this, and I think it's, it's a really beautiful place. It's also an example of, you know, being this urban village that Albany is, right? And rekindling this relationship with the original inhabitants of this land, right? We, Giltrack is located right next to Quail Creek, which the Segurte Land Trust and the tribe actively stewards, and to be able to show people and show the community and children what this looks like and what it can look like is, is be really important, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, good evening. My name is Effie Rawlings, and I am a staff person at the Giltrack Farm, a very longtime volunteer, and I'm happy to be here tonight and excited to be included on the list of very worthy programs that you all have to consider. Thank you for including us in that consideration. You will have seen that our total request was for a little over fifty-three thousand dollars, and that AUSD is requesting or advising seventeen, which we are also grateful for. We feel that if we are able to secure that amount, we can have at least a pilot of the fuller program, though it would be nice to include all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, which we could do for the larger amount. As my fellow farmers have so elegantly described, the farm is a place that kids have a chance to connect with the original inhabitants of this land, with creatures, of native creatures and, and plants, and also learn how to grow food. So, for me, the sugar-sweetened beverage tax is a perfect example of how to, to fund a program like this, because they're learning about the alternatives. We also have talked with teachers about including students in the development of the program itself, and several students that we talked to said that they would be really excited about it, and learning about the alternatives, and also we, we would like to include knowledge about what are the impacts of sugar on the body, and what can you eat that tastes good besides the highly sugared foods? We want, want to give kids that, that embodied experience at the farm, which we just did a couple days ago. Some of us were there with sixty eighth graders, which it's hard to get eighth graders to focus. Some of you may know, I have a, I have an eighth grader at home, but they were into it, and we heard them saying things like, "Oh, wow, this isn't so bad," and, you know, groups of eighth grade boys, like, there in the grass, like, daring each other to eat other to eat this or, this or that green that they'd never tried before. We only got to have them for about an hour, but we felt the impacts, and we saw them talking about it, and each one, even those boys, took a flower and pressed it and took it home for, for safekeeping. So yeah, if you, if you all have any costs, or questions, excuse me, about the costs, I'm here to answer them. Thank you for considering us.
Thank you for your comments. Not seeing anyone else in the audience. Do we have any online commenters?
Sorry, Jeremy, could you help let them in, please?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, okay, thanks. Hey, hi, City Council Mayor and Vice Mayor. My late father was a jazz singer, so I grew up in, with music in my house, and I love music. As much as music has always been a part of my life, I just feel it's not appropriate or within the spirit of the sugar-sweetened beverage ordinance to spend thousands of those dollars to pay musicians. Proceeds from the sugar-sweetened beverage tax are to be earmarked for projects that directly improve the health and wellness of Albany residents and visitors. Therefore, items that have been funded are proposed in the past, such as water bottle filling stations and crossing guards, so kids can safely walk to school, and fitness and swimming classes, and bike racks and lockers, and inclusive playground equipment, rapid flashing beacon lights, bike safety classes and rodeos, healthy nutrition and cooking classes, all those, active transportation supporting the Saha Project residents, all those really fit the bill to a T and the spirit of the ordinance. They're examples of long-lasting projects that will help people live healthy lives and create long-term healthy habits, and those are some of the projects which are appropriate expenditures fitting the purpose and the spirit of this tax. However, funding entertainers and single-day events isn't an appropriate use of this money. Spending the proceeds on music or entertainment won't have a lasting impact on anyone's health, and thus is an inappropriate use of the limited, and as you, as it's been pointing out, pointed out, diminishing funds. Just because an event's a positive event for the community doesn't mean it's an appropriate way to spend these particular sugar-sweetened beverage tax proceeds. The funds are earmarked to benefit public health and wellness activities, going directly to areas that create long-term healthy habits and skills, not to entertainment. Please ask yourself how you can maximize these dollars to be a true investment in community health, and have a lasting impact on people's health, wellness, and fitness, not a single day of activity, and spend the sugar-sweetened beverage tax proceeds on programs which directly do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, thanks. Hi, this is Julie Chang-Crank. I'm a Parks Recreation Open Space Commissioner, but I'm speaking also as a Albany resident and mom of a volleyball player, and I just wanted to voice my support of the sand volleyball court, which we put in front of you all as our first priority as commission. But I also wanted to say, you know, kind of in line with the last commenter, that this is really a unique opportunity to create a whole new recreation sport for Albany that we don't currently have a dedicated space for, and that the funds that would be used to support this are really unique, in that I don't think there's any other way we could support the installation of a new sand volleyball court at this time. We don't have the, you know, other tax revenue to draw from necessarily, and I think it's just a really unique program, whereas, not to say that the other programs are very important also, but there are other sources of revenue for some of those programs. So I really highly urge you all to help fund the sand volleyball court, given its sort of unique opportunity for the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
That's all.
I'll bring it back to council for discussion.
Because it seems like the council's arrived at a threshold moment. If the revenue projection of $215,000 is what is going to develop, which we don't know, but if that is the case, and we accept that, and even if we think it's going to be somewhat more with the crossing guards at $225,000, we either need to decide as a body that we're going to program more than that, or we're done. I have my thoughts on that, but I can go ahead and say that I think we should program more. I mean, there have been a number of years when, at least two, went $100,000 less than the revenue was spent. At this time, it's about $550,000, I think, less has been spent than taken in. Now, this is not a special tax, so I want to emphasize that. But on the other hand, it is a political decision, I would say, because the measure that the voters passed did have a recommendation to spend it on improving health and reducing sugar-sweetened beverage consumption. So it's, it's a gray area, I would say. And for me, as somebody that has run campaigns for a lot of tax measures, and I think we have a good thing going in the city in terms of this trust that we have with the electorate, which, which extended to Measure DD, which was the UT increase, I'm just worried about a perception that we're not honoring what the recommendation was. So it's, it's a tricky issue. But I'd be interested in hearing other council members' thoughts on that.
So I was gonna, in a similar vein, but I was gonna maybe look at this a slightly different way, in that in talking with staff, I found out that UC used to help pay for crossing guards at one point, so, and knowing that under your leadership, we now receive some funds from UC to help cover fire and police. One could think of this, that as an extension, police, crossing guards used to be part of the police department, and so if we were to think of the UC funding, at least funding one-third of the program, given that we have three elementary schools that have crossing guards, and that being the most proximate to the UC, it would make sense, then we can think of really the ask of the sugar-sweetened beverage tax being about $150,000 instead of $225,000. So that does give us some discretion with which to select other items, if we want to try and stay at $215,000, $225,000, or if we want to go beyond that. But I was thinking maybe that sense, because otherwise, I was looking at this a little bit like, all of our money would be just spent on the crossing guard.
Interesting idea. Can I ask staff of, have we allocated, have we allocated the funds that we get from UC in this, and do we have the wiggle room to put some of the crossing guards in there?
So that revenue is also housed within our general fund, so it's all one in the same, and it's all fully programmed through our operating budget as it exists. So basically, any shuffle within the same general fund, you're basically just using general fund, which, as you know, with a projected deficit means you're, you're borrowing.
My understanding was that the first year's worth of that contribution by UC came in in August of, of last year? So I, I don't know that that, was that actually included in the, our adopted budget for this year?
It's been incorporated therein, the revenue, yes. And with a deficit, it's absorbed anyway. I should correct myself, $200,000 is held in a reserve for the fire engine apparatus. The remaining funding goes straight into the general fund for existing services.
Right, $200,000 of the $600,000?
Right.
Yeah, okay. I think the threshold question is, maybe we'll find some accounting trick to forestall it, but it's really the future of the crossing guard program. You know, is that going to become a core service to the city or not? I don't, we can deal with it, or we can't do with it now, it's not really on the agenda per se, but we have, we're gonna have to deal with that, obviously.
I just want to acknowledge, yes, I understand, funds are within the general fund and considered one of all the same, and potentially how we could perhaps move funds around that come from the UC, from prior agreement that's been established, but I still think it is worth city staff time, and perhaps a couple of us on council to engage in conversation with the UC specifically for helping to offset the cost for the crossing guard program, especially because we do have a significant number of young folks in the UC villages that do benefit from the crossing guard program. And I think this is just perfect timing, because I had actually sent off a very assertive email this morning about this, to folks in the UC, to, for them to explore having their own crossing guards in the UC village, because I almost got T-boned again today at the corner of Aloney and Jackson in the village, with my daughter in the car. And I think just to speak to the necessity of having more rounded, more well-rounded and robust support there, from, on the UC's part, and holding them accountable as well. And I thought, I think this conversation right now is perfect, is perfect timing, and at least bringing that to the surface right now. We don't need, again, to nitty-gritty of it, but I think there is something to be said there, that perhaps this time around, we could consider shifting the fund that just came from the UC right now, temporarily, but with long-term vision, that we have strategic conversation to see how the UC could potentially help us offset the cost for the crossing guard program.
You said something there I didn't quite catch. You got T-boned?
Almost got T-boned. Unfortunately, we have a prevalent issue in the UC village during the morning and evening commute hours, where people do not stop at the stop sign, they just zoom through on Jackson to cut through Albany to get to Berkeley. And this is about the third time I've almost got T-boned at that intersection, with the first time with my daughter. She was visibly shaken in that moment, but this is an issue that UC does need to address within their own jurisdictional oversight, and I think this is an opportunity to encourage better collaboration between city and UC.
Thank you.
So I, I don't want to be a downer. I feel like I'll probably repeat that a couple times in this meeting, as we all probably will have to. I think it's definitely worth discussing with UC if they can pitch in or anything. Just off the discussions that we had to get us the agreement we're in now, I'm not terribly optimistic about getting there, given that the funding agreement we have, the crossing guard program is kind of a pretty dead-center example of the type of thing it was written to possibly fund. So I think if we go to UC and say, "Can you fund the crossing guard program?", and say, "Aren't we giving you $600,000 a year for expressly that sort of service?", you know, we can always try. Now, that's not to say that we shouldn't consider using some of that funding for this, given that, to your suggestion, Mayor, then that, as pointed out by the city manager, that gets us back to a situation of, we are still talking about, it's all general fund. And it's important of how we and the public are differentiating where all that money is going, for the purposes of, you know, this tax has a purpose, and it goes to our general fund, we want to use it to fulfill that purpose. But we also do have to be aware of the top-of-line area of, you know, we're budgeting more from the general fund in time of, of lean times for our budget. Now, it's not to say I disagree, to Councilmember Jordan, what you said, you know, I agree. We, as we have done in every year I've been on this, in this meeting previously for this tax, I think we will probably end up going above the revenue projected for the sugar-sweetened beverage tax. I think there's always good reason to do so, given how many good ideas and useful ideas and, you know, obvious benefit to the community ideas we get as part of this. We should probably be careful about, you know, there's, there's an amount, we should be willing to go above that, and, and there's not a hard and fast version of that, but we've got to find it somewhere. And that makes it hard to have, you know, do we want to continue funding for a bunch of these small programs, or fund one big one? You know, that's always difficult. I think one, this is getting ahead to some things I wanted to repeat at the end, but just, I think there's part of this of, we should consider how we're doing this sort of thing in the future, of, I find these sugar-sweetened beverage tax hearings quite frustrating, because it becomes a clearinghouse for a lot of good ideas, not all of which we can fund. It's very, it's, you know, it's not fun to sit up here and try and figure out how we're going to do all of them, or which ones we're going to do. So I think we should consider, and I discussed this a little bit earlier today with the city manager, of how we can in the future try and do something like this on a bit larger of a scale, of something that's a little bit like participatory budgeting, of looking at like, what are the priorities we have in the community on a larger scale than this, and how do we fit them in, and how do we prioritize them as funding becomes available? And I think the city manager is suggesting this, you know, one area we have flexibility to do that with even more than this is the council's discretionary budget, which is also good to think about in terms of this meeting, because if, you know, as far as we go over, if there's projects we want to fund that fit within that, and we, you know, are going over the amount we have from this tax, we can always fund one or two from that. We have 20K that the council has, and we have previously, for context, in past years, used a lot of that to fund events in the city, but thanks to the hard work of our staff, we now actually include that in our budget, just as a part of, you know, community support programs. So we don't have to use that discretionary funds, and we can use it for things like this that don't quite make it in otherwise. Or I think in the future, it would behoove us to think about, how do we get a lot of ideas from the community, from our advisory bodies, from everyone about how do we want to use those funds or other funds, and what projects we want to prioritize? Very long-winded, so I'll stop for now.
I had a question on the discretionary fund. Is that used for travel as well, or what? I seem to recall that is paid for some sort of operational expenses for the council.
The discretionary fund is simply discretionary, for use as the council sees fit, usually brought up by one council member for a suggested thing that may come up, that you hadn't anticipated of community benefit. We have a separate line item for training and travel.
Okay, thank you. And to your knowledge, which is so far down to the details, you may not have it at your fingertips, but has any portion of the discretionary fund been used at this time?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick question of clarification, because again, essentially, you know, if general fund is all one of the same, do we, in this moment, have this ability to perhaps recommend maybe a third of what the cost of the crossing guard program come from the funding source that we got from the UC right now? And of course, have high, have high hopes, low expectations that, you know, in the future, UC would support that, but maybe you use this as, for the time being, as framework moving forward. That way, we also open up available revenue from SSB tax revenue to support additional program, because what I see in front of me and what we hear from folks are a variety of wonderful ideas, and I know it is always very difficult for us to want to pick and choose, and it puts us in a very difficult situation, I think, too, because these are also our neighbors, and, you know, it's different from some of the bigger cities, whereas sometimes you're not going to really run into the people often, but this is a small town, and I think we, we have an opportunity, if this, if this is something we could do, we have an opportunity to fund significant amount of these programs, either through SSB tax revenue and our capital improvement project funds. We have what, what feels like a variety of options and opportunities at our disposal right now. We have what feels like a variety of options and opportunities at our disposal right now. And I think that's worth for, worth having a discussion about as we're trying to identify how to spend what we have, but maybe even perhaps stay under what we are estimated projection for SSB tax for this year or upcoming year.
Just a couple of questions and kind of going off of what you were saying is, is different buckets or different areas? Do we have any of those buckets that would actually fit some of these programs better? Like, could we bring funding from any other projects or?
Potentially. And I think we're edging towards what would really help staff in, in looking at that further would be for the council to prioritize what you have before you. So we understand what's most critical and pressing. We understand what the projected revenue amount is through SSB as currently reported, which could change, as well as other potential funding sources based on the projects and programs you're identifying before you so that we know which funds may have a nexus. So that would really help us in following up and reporting back.
I also have one other question as far as the volleyball courts, because I know that that was a very popular item. Many people wrote in about that. But realistically speaking, like, I mean, we have, you know, so much time left in the year, where would, where could that even fit within the rest of the projects in our city?
Mark Hurley, Public Works Director. So the volleyball court would actually be an FY25 project or work, work task for us. And so that would start in June, July, end of June. So we did look at this with the, through the context of being completed in a calendar year, so it's an operating expense. And from our sort of gauging, it's very similar to what we do for refreshing the infield of the baseball fields after, after the rain. So it's kind of along those lines where it's, it's a significant amount of work, but it's not necessarily a capital project.
Actually, while you're up there, I was curious about the water bottle filling station at a park. So you run me through the 15K? That seems like a lot to replace a drinking fountain.
Well, we got a, so there is some, some contingency in there because whenever you dig, you think you have it all sorted out and sometimes you don't. So this is an existing water bottle filling station, or it's a water, water fountain that's not functioning correctly. We believe the water could be functioning if we removed it and cleaned it out. So we looked at, I believe we got a quote for the, the equipment of like $6,000, $7,000. And a typical thing is doubling that for installation. So we would have to move it out from its current location so it would be better, better positioned and then probably redoing some plumbing and disposal of the other one. So it's, a lot of little things add up.
Thank you. $6,000 for the, the item itself was the part I was after, thanks.
Before you sit down. We've always got you up here.
Sure.
As much as we love to make staff walk back. You mentioned that the volleyball court isn't necessarily a capital project. Can you just talk a little bit about how that sort of thing fits in with our existing plan of like park improvements and what are capital projects and that? Because I know we have a plan of like, lots of things we want to do with our parks and improve courts and all this sort of stuff and how this fits in and if it's been thought about before.
So, yes and no. So from a, I think everywhere and we see it, we have more need than we have funding. And so we are planning to do an update to our capital improvement program. And I think it would be focusing pretty heavily on parks because there are a lot of things that were, need to be refreshed and upgraded. And I think one of the struggles with this, this volleyball court is that it's going to go up against things like, hey, we need to really start thinking about replacing the play equipment in all the playgrounds. We have additional tennis courts that need to be refreshed. So those are some larger ticket items that we, that will add up and, you know, this might not stack up as much. So that's why this is a, an opportunity to fund this through a different source.
So just to drill down, it's essentially like, we've got a priority list that includes a lot of sort of baseline stuff that you're talking about?
Yeah, so it's, I would say we have a list and I think part of the CIP process is to get ideas of what the, you know, what the priorities are through various commissions and input. And, you know, we plan to do a study session here at council after we go through the various commissions and, you know, through that process, my sense is this may not stack up as much as some of the other things, more foundational needs.
Great. And do we have any idea when that study session is going to happen?
No, we've been trying to schedule it, but we've got a lot on our plate and so it's, it's, it's coming.
Very much appreciated and understandable. Thank you. Great.
All right, one more. I just want to, basically going along with what you were stating is just, you know, it's good to take care of what we already have prior than adding more stuff that we'll end up having to take care of in the future going forward as well. And one of the, I know I saw an email and I don't know whether staff has answered this or not, but is there any information on underneath the Bart Trucks, the Aloney Greenway of the equipment that was reported not functioning?
Yep, so that was, that was actually, we, one of the recommendations that started is to replace some of that equipment there as we got into it. And actually, some of our commissioners drilled into some of this stuff and it really came out that the equipment with moving parts is a real struggle for us. And we can't, we can't provide the, a level of attention that those pieces of equipment need to keep them functioning the way they need to be functioning. One of the pieces we were looking at had a, I didn't realize this at first, but had a Bluetooth app that allowed you to control the resistance and that, everything else had a 10-year warranty and that had a one-year warranty, so you could figure out how that's going to work. So what we've done is we're, we're pulled out the equipment that's not working and we're, at the last pros commission meeting, we established ad hoc subcommittee to look at re, what would fit in that space that meets the needs of the community, but then also is more maintainable. And so that's one of the needs that get factored into the upcoming CIP.
Yeah, I remember there was, there was all that great park horse. I remember when that was first put in before all of the Aloney Greenway had to be like revamped underneath and all the new lighting and stuff, but that was, I think, funded from like Nancy Reagan's program way back. So, but they had the different park horse areas and none of that stuff was move, movement or, you know, but it was still healthy activity stuff, so.
So there, there are a number of pieces of equipment on the north side of that little area that are sort of that same vein where nothing moves and it's, you know, pull-ups, push-ups, that type of stuff. And that seems to get a lot of use and doesn't break.
So Vice Mayor Lopez, you mentioned, and I didn't recall, that crossing guards is specifically mentioned in that agreement that we, that we approved with UC, is that correct?
I think Aaron mentioned that.
Oh.
It, it's not specifically mentioned, but as I recall with how we wrote that agreement, it was for a range of city services, sort of in benefit of the village to some extent. Specifically some core and, you know, that supported a range of goals. And we specifically wrote it to be somewhat broad to, you know, allow us some flexibility, but also, you know, be talking about the types of stuff that we would do or already doing to benefit the village. So, you know, be that providing, you know, emergency services to the village, which was a big impetus there, providing crossing guards, providing, you know, cleanup along the creek or something like that, you know. So it's not specifically mentioned, but it is, I think, very much within the umbrella as we wrote it.
My recollection from the agreement is that I think there's maybe some annual back and forth with UC. So in confirmation of that, is your sense that UC would not look askance at programming 75K crossing guards? I mean, it was unclear, you know, it's a little nebulous in the agreement, what this coming together means.
Sure, I'll be happy to answer the question and then want to steer us back to the study session. There, there will be a annual meeting between the parties with a conversation about how the funds are being allocated, again, as general fund money. And those will be for community benefits at large. So there is no necessarily like they are granting us this money and approving an expenditure plan. It's more of, here's what we're doing with the funding that serves the larger community.
Yeah, I guess it's, it's a, so it's a matter of maintaining credibility. I mean, it's a 10-year agreement, but we don't want to get to the end of the 10 years and UC say, not been using it on the right stuff. On the other hand, there's obviously precedent, and I appreciate the mayor having this thought of UC used to pay for half the crossing guards, so that's a pretty great historical nexus. So maybe we, I mean, I still think, even with that, that approach, the two-thirds of the crossing guards is eventually going to eat the entire SSB. So I think we do need to think about this, not tonight, we're not going to solve it tonight, but I think we can buy ourselves a year and commit to having an agenda item, I don't know, whatever, three, six months from now to figure out, okay, how is this going to work going forward? I would be in support of that. And so if that were the case, then that would actually open up, I understand that if the projection is 215,000 and the crossing guards are 150,000 from the SSB, then that would open up 65,000.
Can we clarify? The staff report, I believe, says expected revenue is 225, yes?
Fiscal year 2025, it's 225.
Thank you.
Thought in the slides, I saw 215 somewhere, but.
It was for fiscal year, for this year's.
This, for this fiscal year's 215.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you. Okay, all right. So maybe, should we put something on the table?
I, actually, I have one, another quick question also, just for the Giltrack. I, I was wondering, have you looked at potentially getting this funding from other sources? Because I'm with the StopWaste.org board and I know that they've got some grant programs available for, for groups like yours, yeah?
Yes, we have collaborated with Stop Waste just recently on research in the village for, and the neighboring communities around culturally relevant foods so that we can grow more culturally relevant foods at the farm. But we haven't collaborated with them on this particular program. We do have a couple of other irons in the fire. We are approaching UC Berkeley to see if we can work with them. We're all trying to work with UC Berkeley on, on collaboration a little bit more. And I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that we may be able to source some from them, but it's, you know, it's not, it's not done until it's done, it's not in the, in the bag till it's there. But we are definitely working on that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that you guys were going after, accessing those, those possibilities there.
We are, yeah. I mean, in general, we're trying to have a few more staff people that are, last year we came with, with not as much understanding of how this budget works and we asked for $100,000, which would help us fund some staff time, part-time staff, because we are working to have more staff. We're all completely people-powered, volunteer-powered at this point, except for me for 20 hours and a Connie for five hours. And one other person for 20 hours, but, you know, we only have funding until the end of October. And so we're working on, working with UC. We have, we have a lot of other collaborators on, on that. And we are, we do feel like we can deliver a portion of the, the project, even if we don't have staff. But it's many different aspects that we're trying to fund from many different angles, including Stop Waste. Thanks for mentioning that.
I have a quick question, Effie. So understandably, 53K is, is also significant requests are asked from what we have available from SSB tax revenue? Can you provide any, any insight on potential flexibility? Could this be compartmentalized for specific age groups? If we would like to support this, but would have to trim it our downsides to stay within our means here?
Yeah, we thought the teachers have, the teachers who have been championing this including Emily have talked about prioritizing elementary, the elementary kids first and basically just slicing it in thirds. So 17,832 to fund elementary, some elementary classes. And then, you know, if we were able to accommodate middle school as well, we could bump it up to 35,000. And then, yeah, if we were able to move to high school, it'd be the full amount. Yeah.
Can, and just quick refresher, in the past, previous councils have considered around 30K of support for Giltrack Farm activities, correct?
Effie would remember, was that actually last, was it last year? I thought it was more years ago, but, yeah, yeah, so I think 30, 30K. May I all put something on the table, just for discussion? So in addition to the crossing guards, two-thirds of the Giltrack Community Farm Field Trip Program with AUSD, the full request for Albany Swims, for the bike safety program and for the water bottle filling station. And that comes to $85,000, which is $10,000 more than the 75,000. I mean, it's all general fund. We could say that comes from our discretionary fund. We could say that comes from this notional past underspending, again, on the idea that some faith to be kept with the voters there. I can explain, not including other things, but.
I missed a number there. So you said?
Sorry, wait.
I'm trying to check that I'm tracking the programs that you mentioned.
Yeah, so two-thirds of the Giltrack Community Farm.
Two-thirds as opposed to the 17?
Yeah. Yes, that sort of splits the difference between the RISE, RISE Commission and, and what AUSD asked for. My, my thinking on that is, if, I think if the program can get going, then they have a better opportunity of attracting funding. Funding usually attracts funding. It's, it's hardest to get that first block. So, you know, with some idea that maybe that would reduce next year is they can fill in with other funding sources.
Can you repeat the dollar amount?
Yeah, so it's 35,844. Actually, .67, 67%. And then the full request for Albany Swims, bike safety and the water bottle filling station.
So you're not including the Healthy Meat Program?
So that the, in the ASD's request, if I understood it, that was zero. They have found another funding source for that? Is that, my understanding is correct?
Oh, sorry.
For this year? You're scaring me. I, I don't mean, I, don't rush on my account.
I just want to bring to council's attention that there, I believe, was some funding for the Healthy Meat Program at Albany Preschool. That is not Albany Children's Center Preschool. Albany Children's Center Preschool is district and, and we can cover the Healthy Meat Program there. But I, I just wanted to make sure that you realize that there was, that there might be another segment of preschoolers in Albany that we are not able to serve. Thank you.
Sorry, is that why there was the $7,000 request? Is that to cover those non-AUSD programs or, sorry, the?
That would be the other $7,000, yeah.
Okay.
Could be added. Clarification there?
Yes, that's correct. So, if the school district covers the classes held at the, in the school facilities, then the $7,000 would be to cover classes at Albany Preschool and at Kids Speaking Spanish Preschool.
Is the $17,000 program through AUSD, is that strictly in the preschool? Is that, I'm sorry, is that strictly in the preschool, preschool-aged children, $17,000 program?
No, it's pre-K and.
Is it like trend?
Transition.
Transition TK.
Yes.
NK?
Yes. It says it here, it's transitioned kindergarten, kindergarten, and then you have the Albany, and then some AUSD preschools. But then, there's additional two independent preschools in Albany that are currently being served by this program.
Okay, I think, I think that was my thinking, was that if it's, if it's K, kindergarten, then any child that goes to AUSD is going to encounter this program. And if it's both kindergarten and preschool, then they're going to encounter it multiple times. So, I'm not sure that that has benefit, given the, you know, the competition of other things that are going on. That's, I think, I think that was my thinking for not including it, the additional 7,000. I'll just go through the other, I mean, the water bottle filling station. The usage of that area is going to, I don't know, quadruple in terms of the pickleball courts that have been or about to be in existence there. So, I think having a water bottle filling station is something that works with that improvement and is important. And obviously, has a key nexus with the source of this funding. And so, active transportation, you know, I listened to the Transportation Commission meeting on that. And that, those residences are in between Cleveland and Pierce. That's not really a place that I'm too keen on. I mean, obviously, education would be helpful, but that's not a great spot currently for people to be biking. The city is going to be building a facility on Cleveland, but it's not there yet. And so, I don't think it's well-timed to have a cycling training course there where there isn't really a, you know, low-stress place for people to bike to and from that location, unfortunately. Move and Groove, I mean, it's obviously a great event, but it's a one-day event. A lot of it is for bands and it's not, you know, particularly educational. So, again, I mean, I'd love to fund it, but given that we're in a constrained situation. So, that was my thinking on those. And then, the inclusive swings. I guess because the OV water bottle filling station was, you know, a capital project. I mean, again, it would be great to, great to do that, but it's just a matter of where to cut the line. So, those were my priorities.
I'm wondering if the swings could potentially be covered by some other, some other funding from some other sources. You know, maybe a grant or something like that, I'm wondering.
Yes, and with the priorities of the council, we can look at those opportunities.
And I didn't talk about the volleyball court. I mean, again, obviously, it'd be fantastic, appreciate all the input, all the comments we received showing the need for it. But at $60,000, that'd be almost the entirety of what we have available, even after this approach we're taking to the crossing guards. So, I just, I think it has to have another funding source besides this one, given the size.
I was, all right, I'm going to, I mean, I think I was inclined, I mean, I agree about the idea of starting, helping start the program with the Giltrack. But I was inclined to go with their initial ASD's number of 17,000, because that gives us flexibility in other programs. I think in some of the follow-up emails we got about Move and Groove, the funding does, the funding that they had secured last year helped reduce the cost. Sorry, funding they received, extra funding they received this year helped them reduce the cost. And they saw a very large increase in number of participants. And I get that it's a one-day event, but it is the kind of thing that I could see us absolutely using our discretionary fund to fund. Now, granted, at this point, we've mixed it all together and we're taking $75,000 from somewhere else in the budget. And we're saying that money is, staff's going to reallocate it somehow, because we're doing some funky things with numbers here. But I think for me, I would be inclined to go with the 17,000 for the Giltrack. Because I think, I think of Move and Groove, that they're going to be going to their third year. I've already been talking with them a little bit about thinking about how we can help them get sponsorships that relieve, let them be successful. They have now two years under their belt to show, they're going to go into their third year. If we give them discretionary funds, we can show the sponsors that, hey, the city's behind this as well. And maybe we can then get some of these other organizations to help costs. So that over the long term, we're not, they're not coming to us to ask for money. They might be asking for staff assistance or things, much in the same way that I approached helping get Solano Avenue Association and the Solano Stroll back up on its feet. It's like, they needed a push now so that they can stay in business and they can get all the sponsors back and they get all the vendors back. And I think that's where I was on the, on the Move and Groove. Ideally, in the long term, it's more of an in-kind thing that the city's giving them, but helping them get up on their feet in the same way that I think for the Giltrack, it would be good for us to give them money. But over the long term, whether it's AUSD, it's the Giltrack, we're working with others to help find, get them sponsors where it's no longer on us, because this, this tax is expected to keep dropping. If we're doing our job right, this tax will continue to decrease. And so, this has to be for, I think of, starting programs that can kind of go on their own, if we're going to spend money on programs.
I'll just, I'll let go, I do, I also agree, Move and Groove, we could move that away from being supported from SSB tax revenue and use discretionary funds for such. I think everyone can agree, it's a wonderful event. And I would make the stretch that though it's perceived as the one-day event, there is, you know, quite a lead-up, quite a bit of lead-up for people who want to participate and who are actively exercising to be ready to actively participate. So, I think there is definitely a strong argument to be made there that they do, in fact, encourage healthy, active lifestyle choices and not just a one-off event. Turn to Giltrack Farm, I know my positionality, being on Dean's Advisory Body Committee there. Me personally, I'd love to see it funded fully at 53,000, but I know the reality is, is what we're working with right now. I'm more agreeable to median that middle mark of 35,000, where we could support elementary and middle school-aged students to at least have something for these students that they start migrating upwards in their academic journey. So that we could maybe look at the school district for future collaboration, help set this pilot in a, in a strong sense. Because my thought process right now is if we just fund for elementary-age group, we may potentially have an issue where we hit a gap of rising scholars that don't necessarily have the intellectual maturity to know how to self-advocate. I think if we're funding elementary and middle school groups right now, we put them in a great position to have a suite of high school and middle school students in very near future to also help get creative and work with school district educators, administrators, work Giltrack Farm, work with us here on council, those of us who may still be around. To maybe look at something more long-term and permanent, something where it's not just at Giltrack Farm, but maybe also on school district property. Like, I have this beautiful vision of seeing micro-urban edible forests all throughout Albany where possible. And I think that is doable, but we need to make sure we make investments now. And so, that's my thought process, my framework at, at least funding elementary, middle school-age group for this project. I know high schoolers are probably going to be bummed out that they, they might not be able to participate. But I think if we show young folks right now that we're willing to make that investment, then it, a strong investment for our community as a whole, to have change agents that are really thinking critically about how do we hold ourselves accountable in a climate crisis with creative ways to engage our farm system. I think we are moving with the thought process of this idea of one-third of crossing guard funding coming from that pocket of money from UC. Certainly alleviates some of the stress we're thinking about, like how to fund items. But I also just want to make clear, as we're, as we're trying to open up and give ourselves some wiggle room, I still want to help ensure that we're staying within reasonable amount of SSB tax that we're expensing, which is, you know, why I'm agreeable with Move and Groove coming from discretionary funds and other particular projects, maybe coming from capital improvement project funds. I also just want to state, you know, lastly, I know last year I had quite, my opinions and perspective about crossing guards and our expenses, because it was quite, quite high, and it's quite high again. But I honestly believe that my concerns were heard and I did, I have seen quite the difference in how, how the crossing guards are. And I, I can't state enough how much I value seeing these crossing guards have a really good relationship with our young people, because that really set the tone for how they're going to interact the rest of the day in their academic setting and their social interaction with other people. I had shared with our city manager recently that almost two to three times a week, I always see this little boy dancing at the corner of Jackson Buchanan, waiting to meet his crossing guard. And it's just the funniest thing, because then there's this other little boy on the other side dancing. And then, there's a kid over by Ocean View dancing and just got this whole dancing party going on. And, you know, it all centers around them having excitement with the crossing guard. And I want to make sure we continue that continuity of having that presence. But also, really sticking to what I believe many of us claim we stand up for, which is for safer streets and investing in our youth, and this is one way to do so. I say all that just to say, I am fully supportive of funding the full request for the crossing guard program. And I don't want anything to be taken from that. And maybe that's also biased now, because my daughter chooses to walk home from school. I don't know if it's because she thinks she's too cool for me. But I can't state enough how thankful I am to have, be able to have extra eyes on our children and make sure that they're safe.
So, if we include, so the total I have, check my math, include Move and Groove, then it's at, say, $91,000. So, if you think of this, 75 is coming from UC's 400,000 under that historic precedent. The rest would come from the council discretionary fund. So, that, so that would fit. I mean, if we think of the council discretionary fund as 20 and 75 as being UC's contribution, then that's 95 we would have available for programming. So, this would be within that.
I think that works for me. It's, it's a little expensive, like we've all mentioned, you know, we're essentially, we're moving things around for accounting. But this is all coming out of the general fund. So, I appreciate that staff is going to figure out exactly how that's going to work and come back with these priorities. You know, like I said earlier, this is a function of this conversation always being dominated by too many things that we'd like to have in our community and have obvious benefit. And it's hard to adjudicate between that and figure out how to pay for them all. So, like I said earlier, I think we need to figure out a way to do that more permanently in a way that takes all these ideas and can really adjudicate them properly, instead of sort of constantly going beyond the remit of this one tax. And this speaks to there being an appetite to do that from our advisory bodies and from the community in broader form. I'd also say that, you know, some of these other things that are on here that we're not, under the suggestion, aren't funding, you know, I don't want to see them disappear, like I mentioned earlier, that the volleyball courts one, you know, that should come back under the plan that Mark mentioned earlier of, you know, we should discuss it in terms of that study session of what are all the other things we want to do with our parks and what improvements we need to make and what baseline, you know, upkeep do we need to pay for? So, I don't want to see that disappear, but otherwise, I think.
I would want to see the swings as well. I am going to voice that I, we are playing with funny money right now. And so, I am very cautious about going beyond the 17,000 that was kind of the minimum ask from the Giltrack Farm. Because we really are, staff is going to have to, if staff goes with what we're saying, they are going to have to find $75,000 that's been funded by the UC contribution and figure out what aren't we doing, essentially? And so, if we can save $18,000, that means there, that lessens the lift they're having to do to figure out, how do we actually make this happen? My hope is that as we move forward, as we figure this system out, that we have a better sense of next year that we haven't assigned all of the UC's funds. So, we're saving some of that funds, thinking that it's going to help us with our crossing guards. I know we don't really track it that way. I see staff's eyes opening wide. So, I'm really cautious going from 17 to 35, 36,000, just because. I'm also cautious because next year, we could be even in a worse situation. And now, you know, I just, I want to be cautious about what we're, where we're sending the funds and kind of the expectations we're setting.
Cautious in the sense of spending it in general or cautious in the sense of it coming directly from SSB tax revenue?
That it's coming from the general fund, because right now, we're really talking about, I mean, I know, I'm the one that raised this. We've got $75,000 of magic money. We don't actually have that money, right? We have 20,000, like we have 225, so we can essentially cover the crossing guards and we have 20,000, right? And what I'm asking staff is to look hard and see if they can find up to 75,000 in what they'd already allocated and reallocated. And if we take 18,000 out of that, you know, that's, I'm not going to do the math in my head, because, what is that, 5,700 or something like that? 57,000? So, I'm just really cautious. I love the Giltrack Farm, Effie, thank you for the tour. I think it's, for me, it's really great to see our elementary students going there, because at Marin Elementary School, they used to have a community garden and they used to have planters in front of each classroom. I think they have planters in front of the classrooms now, but not all of them. So, the ability for students to go and actually see the farm and grow their own stuff, I think is great. I'm really cautious about setting an expectation, we're going to be able to, 35,000 a year towards a program.
I guess I view it like the Move and Groove, I mean, the goal is that they find other funding. And I mean, that's, it's part of the reason I'm willing to support the Move and Groove at the full 5,000 is under that understanding that.
They sent a revised number of 7,500 to us, by the way.
Yeah, I know. That others are going to work with that event to bring that down. And I think the same will have to happen with the Giltrack, with this program, if it is to continue. But you can consider this like the first year of the program. Maybe I should make a motion? I don't know, is there a motion?
Can I ask a question of staff, right, just a quick?
Sure.
Just a quick.
Sure.
So, um, we're going to give you a recommendation. You're going to come back and you're going to tell us here's how we were or we're not able to make these things happen. Um, so if you were to go with a $35,000 number, you could tell us how easy or how hard it is to get to that instead of 17,000? Okay. Sorry, I'm just laying the groundwork for you to go and say, let's start with a recommendation of 35,000.
Yeah. I mean, I'll also note that the, the Q2 report we got, um, it assumed 50% transfer in by Q2, which if you looked at the past Q2 reports, it's never happened. It's been like 10 to 15%. So that made us look like we had a deficit and also didn't have December sales tax in it. So if you do equivalency with the past Q2s and the way the accounting was done, we had a surplus. Now, I'm not saying that'll develop in the end. Um, and we do, and our budget does say we have a deficit, but the actual of Q2, the way I look at it with those adjustments to match the past, we're not in the red. So I, I'm more interested in seeing, you know, where do we end up at after, after this fiscal year is out? Because I'm, I'm not convinced that we're actually going to have a deficit at all when Q4.
I'd like to also add, it will very much depend on our audited financials as well because that's when we'll know exactly what we have and if there is a surplus or not. Otherwise, everything we're talking about is projections.
Okay. We go in with the understanding that at minimal, we can support 17K, but looking to see if we could support, uh, middle school. Um, because I think my next angle of negotiation would have been, um, half from SSB, half from UC funding. But again, it's all one of the same and I'm not, that's what I'm trying to avoid is dipping into our general funds more than we already have right now. But if we can find a way to, uh, potentially maximize our investment because I think this is a different case where if we help support it now and get it going, we can potentially have stronger conversation with the UC as opposed, uh, about this as opposed to a crossing guard program. Um, because there, there should be no reason why the UC can't come to the table and, uh, fund half or the majority of this, um, in support with school district and city council.
All right, well, yeah.
Uh, just to add, just a little more context because I know we dipped briefly into there into, you know, our budget this year, will we realize a deficit? What will happen? I just want to always bring us back to thinking about, in long-term, it's part of the reason we're talking so much about deficit is because that will continue to grow as we've heard of this unfunded liability is going to keep growing and that is outside of our control. And while we usually budget for a deficit for a lot of complicated reasons that we've discussed many times before, we don't usually realize it, but we will maybe start to in the future, not this year, maybe not next year, which is what we're talking about for funding now. Because also, you know, I think it's important to say, you know, we're talking about next year's funding, not this year's. And we will get closer and closer to that. And it's very good for us to think about this, especially for this tax in that, you know, like you're saying, we're, we're trying to do startup cost, but as I think we've proven every time we have this discussion, it's really hard to fund something one year and then not fund it ongoing because that need just keeps being there and we never want to stop having a program that we've started, um, because we can obviously see the benefit and we have tangible, uh, you know, evidence of its impact. Um, so I want us to be clear of when we're, when we're talking about the, the strain situation, we're talking about in a sort of long-term situation of where the stresses on our budget are going to grow in, uh, outside of our control in the next couple of years, put together with that the crossing guard program will keep expanding in its, uh, cost just due to cost of living increases, if nothing else, to the wage that we pay those people, um, as well as that, like we've said a couple of times, this tax will probably continue to shrink if it's doing its job. It is meant to disincentivize people to spend money on the thing that it's taxing. If it keeps shrinking, that is a good thing in many ways, but it means we have less money to work with. So I, I just really want us to be aware of all those things.
Yes, I think unlike in the, in the past, in my memory of these study sessions, sending the signal that this is startup funding, which has not been done before, um, rather than just ending it is important so that that message is there and the expectations are set and the funding is going to decline year by year and you either succeed in finding other funding or you don't, but you had a shot.
Which I think is very good to note now. It's often hard to do on the follow-through, but yes, I completely agree with you.
All right, well, I'm, I'm going to move, um, uh, funding, full funding for the crossing guard program, um, two-thirds funding for the Giltrack Community Farm, Giltrips Program, which is on my screen, 35,844. Uh, full funding for Albany Swims, bike safety, the OV water bottle filling station and move and groove at $5,000.
Is that, so that is leaving healthy music and movement off?
Yeah, again, because if, if students, given that that program's in the kindergartens, if my understanding is correct, then students who are in preschools and go to AUSD are going to encounter that again. Now, obviously the reinforcement is good, but given that we're in this constrained position, um, I think one encounter with that program is, is a reasonable target.
And I have a quick question based upon that because the bike safety program, from what I'm reading here is it's only for the fifth grade students at Ocean View?
Um, I think if I read that correctly, this year they're yet to get Marin?
Yeah.
Coming up, yeah, right.
So then does this 15,000 cover, like, you know, I mean, if we're talking about like pre-K, first K and, you know, I just want to be sure that this is hitting.
So that, are you talking about the 15,000 for the, the bike safety? So I believe that is in, well, you're coming up. I don't have to believe.
Uh, the general idea is that it covers all three elementary schools, but I believe that they do alternate some, but all of the students, regardless of your elementary school, you will get the program before you graduate the elementary and go on to the middle. Okay?
Yeah, I know in the past it was fourth and fifth grade. So you either got it in fourth, they would do fourth and fifth grade PE at a particular school because they have to get all the equipment there and so it was an easy way to do it. And so you either got it in fourth or fifth grade and then they would go away, you know, come back again two years later to that school.
One more clarifying question. Uh, that last one you said, is the direction meant to be that that is coming out of our discretionary fund or do we not need?
So I guess, I mean, again, um, it would be 75K out of UC and the rest out of our discretionary fund.
Our discretionary fund, I'm using to mean the council's discretionary fund.
Right, yes.
Which is a set amount.
20,000 is my understanding.
Right.
So this, this totals 90,844. So it would be 15,844 out of the council's discretionary fund and the other 75K is through the, uh, brilliant accounting of our mayor.
Um, the efforts of our staff to find.
Okay, fair enough.
Um, I'll second the motion.
Nice.
Opportunity for discussion, just make sure it's clarified that staff understands that the 35,844 is our goal and the minimum is 17,000 for the Giltrack Farms. When you come back with, perfect, thank you. A city clerk, could we have a, we need to vote for a recommendation? We're just giving you guidance, right? So, okay.
Okay.
Um, well, thank you everyone for our conversation. Thank you everyone who came today in person and who called in. We are going to go ahead and adjourn the special meeting and, um, we will take a five-minute break before we come back for our regular meeting at 7:42. Welcome everyone, Vice Mayor and council members. Uh, I'd like to call this regularly meeting of the Albany City Council for April 15th, 2024 to order. Uh, council member Jordan, would you read the land acknowledgement statement?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The city of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederate villages of Lishon. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloney Tribe. Thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The city of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home.
Thank you, council member Jordan. City clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, council member Hanson Maramara.
Here.
Council member Jordan.
Here.
Council member Tiedemann.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez.
Here.
And Mayor Mickey.
Here. Um, we, uh, for those joining us, we did not have a closed session. We, for those joining us, we did not have a closed session. The closed session that we originally had planned at four thirty today was canceled. We'll move on to item five, City Manager's report. City Manager, can we have your report, please?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pleased to report that the city has provided an annual progress report to the California Department of Housing and Community Development, HCD. This is written in regards to achievements made with our housing developments throughout the city. During the calendar year of two thousand and twenty-three, the city entitled, meaning approved, a total of twenty-one dwelling units issued building permits to twelve, sorry, ten dwelling units, all ADUs, and finalized or completed seventeen dwelling units, all ADUs. All of the ADUs are considered moderate income housing units for the two thousand and twenty-three year. A reminder, please attend, we're really looking forward to it and a lot of planning has gone underway. I know you received a presentation at your last meeting as well. The Community Expo is fast approaching on April twenty-seventh. This is one of our major city events with regard to city services and helping anyone in the community access city services, not just governmental services, but we have over fifty information booths from nonprofits and service providers. And it's also all kinds of fun entertainment, including music and dance and a bunch of different food opportunities as well, so please join us at that event. It will be on April twenty-seventh from ten to two at the Community Center. Bigger and better than ever, I am told. So, thank you to the staff actively working on that event. We have a lot of surveys underway and surveys are an important tool we use as one piece of information as we engage with the community. As, in addition to direct conversations, the first of which is a community tree survey. This is intended to help inform the city's street tree management plan, which is currently underway to develop policies and programming around street trees within our city. Your opinion is important and this short survey will help further inform decision-making going forward on this plan. We also have a survey for the Canes and Adams Bike Way Pilot Project. This is some changes that we've done to previously one-way streets and continuing to look at what is the best utility on those streets for all users. So, again, input on your experience with the streets and any other ideas will be very helpful to the groups within the city, including the City Council, considering next steps with that project. A reminder that the Ever Love Citywide Garage Sale is forthcoming on May fourth from nine AM to three PM. This is an opportunity to literally wander through the City of Albany at many, many garage sales and really with a focus as it was originated on reuse versus disposal of perfectly reusable goods. Appreciation to the organizers and volunteers with regard to the Albany Move and Groove Event. Great turnout, great energy, and really just a community nexus at that event with music and exercise and engagement throughout. A reminder that spring on Solano is this Sunday. The Solano Avenue Association hosts this event and it showcases live music, entertainment, activities, and specials offered by the businesses along the avenue. Albany, the City of Albany is one of the sponsors of this event. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Let's see, any council questions for City Manager? Any public comment? I'm not seeing any public comment. Thank you, City Manager. We'll move on to item six, Good of the City. For persons desiring to address the City Council on item that is not on the agenda, please note that city policy limits each speaker up to three minutes. The Brown Act limits the council's ability to take and/or discuss items that are not on the agenda. Therefore, such items are normally referred to staff for comment or to a future agenda. And we can start in the room?
Melan Michael, next will be Alyssa Pena Perez and Delina Casa. Go ahead and go to the approach the podium, please.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. My name is Melan Michael and I attend Albany High School. I'm fifteen years old and in fall of two thousand and twenty-three, four hundred and twenty-eight Albany community members were surveyed. Eighty-three percent supported the ending, ending the sales of tobacco in Albany. Eighty-two percent believe that the city leadership could take action on reducing access to tobacco. Seventy-nine percent felt that fewer youth would not try smoking or vaping if tobacco were not sold in Albany and sixty-eight percent believe that their community has been negatively impacted by tobacco. If four hundred and twenty-eight Albany community members feel that way, feel that the ban of tobacco would positively impact our community, then why aren't we taking action? And as a student, I feel that the ban of all sales of tobacco in Albany can really help stop addiction in my community. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Mayor Mickey, Vice Mayor Lopez, and Councilmembers. My name is Alyssa Rosie, sorry, Alyssa Rosie Pena Perez, and I am a seventeen-year-old junior attending Albany High School. I am a tobacco prevention advocate driven by making my community clean of tobacco products for not only me, but my little brother. As a student, as a student, I've walked into high school bathrooms and surrounded by artificial tobacco full puff clouds in order to advertise a hit. I bet my little brother has too. With their vendors being as close as three, as a three-minute drive, it's easy to get a hold of their favorite strawberry mango vape. Easy access to these tobacco products have a hold on us. They're addicting, tempting, and hooked towards society's generational norms. In spring two thousand and twenty-three, four hundred of Albany Unified Middle and High School students surveyed. Seventy-seven percent out of four hundred supported ending the sales of tobacco products in Albany. Concurring with this data, concurring, sorry, concurring with this data, tobacco not only affects adults and parents, but also us children. Stop production in Albany is deemed as useless to lawmakers because tobacco products are still manageably accessible, although difficult. This doesn't mean the City of Albany should give up on limited local access. My question today to you all is, what more statistics, surveys, proof of addiction and health decline is needed before tobacco sales in Albany are eliminated? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
After Delina will be Sarah D., Stephen Albert, and Allison Gornstead.
Greetings, everyone. My name is Delina Casa. I am in the eleventh grade and I attend Albany High School. In spring of two thousand and twenty-three, sixty-six percent of Albany middle and high school students felt that fewer youth would not try smoking slash vaping if tobacco were not sold in Albany. Fifty-six percent of Albany high school residents reported have been exposed to secondhand smoke in the past two weeks and seventy-seven percent supported ending the sale of tobacco in Albany. If sixty-six percent of students feel that fewer youth would stop smoking, why aren't we doing something about it? The students are telling you themselves that they've, if they didn't have access to tobacco products, they would not use them. As a student at Albany High School, I see this every day, seeing how tobacco affects my fellow students. Physic, not only physically, but also mentally, I truly want to see a difference and I want to see a change. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm an Albany resident and I've started following the Albany Climate Action Coalition and wanted to elevate the great work that they've been doing to save large hundred-year-old-plus native trees in the neighborhood on private property that are at risk of removal. A few weeks ago, a large coastal oak was removed from a backyard in an Albany home. And in light of this, recently, an ACAC member was able to convince another homeowner to delay the total removal of a large coastal oak in their backyard. There is currently fundraising underway to provide community assistance to the property owner to prune the tree and make repairs to paving and fencing caused by the tree's growth. These two recent events involving mature, approximately a hundred-year-old oak trees on private property have raised concerns among community members and have highlighted the need to provide some level of protection for landmark mature trees in Albany that are not on city property. And I'm in favor of these tree protection ordinances that would keep property owners from totally eliminating a significant tree that was healthy and posed no safety risk. This could be limited to specific native species, include assistance to the property owner to address the negative impacts of the tree on their ability to enjoy their residence. San Francisco, Berkeley, Palo Alto, Menlo Park, and other Bay Area cities have tree protection ordinances and I think Albany could follow suit and should make this a priority for maintaining some of the most prized landmarks in the city as historical sites. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Stephen Albert. Tonight, I appear in person to again request that the city address its practice of only alerting those within three hundred feet of any construction project, regardless of its size. I presented this issue as a Zoom participant at the last city meeting. The video of that meeting will confirm that Councilman Jordan did not address rationale for alerting only those within three hundred feet. Likewise, the city attorney declined to comment on the feasibility of a two-tier notification scheme to distinguish between large and small-scale projects. As before, all city officials were provided with the questions I posed tonight. You are not being blindsided. First, a brief review. Last November, I received a notice of public hearing in the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding minor additions to nine nineteen Ventura Avenue, a private residence. I did not receive a similar notice for the five-story mixed commercial residential structure proposed for sixteen hundred Solano, four hundred feet from my residence. The minor additions on Ventura are of little consequence. In contrast, if built, the five-story modern box proposed for sixteen hundred Solano will drastically change the character of Solano Avenue. Two public hearings were held for sixteen hundred Solano. I was not notified of these hearings, given that I reside more than three hundred feet from the building site. Whereas the city follows its approved ordinance of only notifying those within three hundred feet of any construction, this practice is inappropriate for large multi-story projects which will impact all of Albany. The council is aware that I distributed a notice highlighting this issue to over three thousand seven hundred Albany households. Many of your constituents agreed that this practice limits public discourse so that the council can push through new projects with, under the radar, by purposely not notifying all Albany residents. Contrary to a claim made by Community Development Director Jeff Bond, no state laws preclude Albany from issuing citywide alerts for new construction. Over the past three months via private email, I requested that the city justify why it chooses only to follow the minimum three hundred feet state mandate rather than providing citywide alerts. I also suggested that regulations could be enacted to distinguish between small projects for which three hundred feet notice is appropriate from large multi-story projects which merit citywide notice. I never received any response from any city council member. According to night, I am again asking Councilmembers Tiedemann and Jordan, who voted in favor of sixteen hundred Solano, to provide the rationale for only alerting those within three hundred feet of new construction, regardless of project size. At the last meeting, Councilman Jordan stated that existing state laws would create legal exposure if the city adopted different rules for notification based on project size. Pursuant to my document requests, City Clerk Shu responded that no state laws support this assertion. One more statement, please. Lastly, I'm again requesting that City Attorney comment on the legality of a two-tiered notification scheme. Thank you for the opportunity to address this issue.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, everybody. My name's Allison Gornstead. I'm an Albany resident. I just want to say I support Dr. Albert's effort and request to ask that the city notify each and every resident on large-scale projects, especially those on the commercial zone that impact the entire city. If it impacts the entire city, the entire city residents, they should be notified. So, I support that. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing me to make public comment. This is Nick Peterson, also with Albany Climate Action Coalition. I want to second the comments made by the earlier speaker about the need to protect some of the more major trees that aren't on public land in Albany. I think it's time, as we move more into climate change era, that some of these major trees are providing important shade and air purification to our city and the surrounding community. So, ACAC has already moved forward to help a neighbor who was thinking of removing roughly a hundred-year-old, very large coastal oak tree from his backyard because of it being a maintenance problem. So, we're eager in having this become something that comes before review rather than just happenstance, finding out the day before the whole tree is going to be removed. So, again, I encourage you in future sessions to take up the idea of a landmark tree preservation ordinance. I think it would be very good for the city and I think it would be what the community would be in favor. And it should also include, you know, having certain assistances to the property owner to ensure that it isn't a burden for them to continue to maintain the tree. Also want to thank all the efforts that have gone into the city tree management plan. Very excited about this coming along and looking forward for public input on that. We'll definitely be doing the survey. Trees are going to be a very important factor with climate change coming and they need to be in the ground now, so anything we can do to expedite that would really be appreciated. Members of ACAC have gone around notifying those members of our community that do not have street trees in front of their homes that the city will in fact plant a street tree there for free if they request it. So, we're trying to get that word out and hopefully increase the amount of requests so that next year we put in even more trees in the ground, especially trees that will, within ten years, reach a reasonable shade level and provide relief from climate change. So, very much in favor of all that, please do consider bringing forward an ordinance for protecting larger trees on private property. Also, there needs to be a process for just trees on public property. And, you know, I know the city has several large trees on just city line. I'm not sure how that's being addressed. Anyway, thank you very much for allowing me to give my opinion.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, this is Elaine Stelton. I just wanted to second the gentleman who said he would like a greater distance than three hundred feet or maybe even more than four hundred feet notification, particularly in the event of a large structure. Something that's like five stories really does block out the sun and really does impact people in a different way than a small addition to a home. So, I would ask the council if they, they might consider a greater radius in the event of a, a large structure going up in a, particularly a residential neighborhood. Thank you so much for serving on the council. Good night.
Thank you for your comments. I think just for those who called in about street trees, in our last meeting, Vice Mayor Lopez requested that that be added to a future agenda item. I believe staff is working on something and we will be in a, to be determined date, we'll be talking about street tree protection on private property. I don't know that I can really address any of the other ones. I'm not sure if cities have the ability to stop the sale of tobacco. of tobacco within their community boundaries, but... So with that, we'll move on to item seven, Consent Calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of consent calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the city council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or a member of the audience requests removal of the items from the consent calendar. So I will look to council and see if there are any items that you would like to discuss in more depth. Not seeing any from council. I will ask if anyone in the public has any items that they would like to discuss from the consent calendar.
I'd like to poll seven-six.
Seven-six. Nick, you can go ahead and provide your public input on that? I don't believe there are any other items being pulled from the consent calendar.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. So again, Albany Climate Action Coalition. City needs to move pretty quickly on electrification. So I see we're getting a new vehicle here. It just says a G04 interceptor. I looked at their site. They do have an EV model. Please tell me this is the EV model so we are not getting another gas engine roaming around Albany, putting out carbon. And if not, I strongly recommend this be the electrical vehicle and not the gas-powered, and that we also pull some funds from the Measure D pocket in order to put in a charge station if that's a big deal. But it seems like, you know, just today I was watching the guy putter around on San Pablo Ave and thought, man, if we can't get, you know, other vehicles electrified, at least we should get that one electrified. And here it is, on the consent calendar, $41,000. I hope it's EV. Does anyone know? Anyway, I really recommend strongly, you know, that the city think about these purchases through the lens of climate. Obviously, this one little interceptor putting around isn't going to make any difference at all in the big picture, but it's just the effort. It's showing the citizens the city cares. That thing's out there running around. You're advertising, if it's electric, that you're, we're at least thinking about that. What's also good is I suggest putting in two charge stations, and the second one will be used for a pilot project for an electric police cruiser. The next time one of those gas hogs comes up to be replaced, it should definitely be an electric one just as a pilot. So let's start moving forward. It's really urgent. There's really only four years left before it's cataclysmic, but I know we're on a, you know, by 2040, which is actually out of touch also. We should update our Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. But the quicker we can move, the better. And here's a really golden and simple opportunity to show that the city is listening and understands and is planning, you know, any vehicle they buy that'll be around for the next 10 years is something that's going to be in sync with our Climate Action Adaptation Plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Just a couple clarifications in the backup that staff provided. Staff did look at the electric G04 interceptor, and they found that there were significant mechanical issues that had been made public in the past and have not been addressed in staff's research. And so staff has come forward with his recommendation of the gas-powered G04 interceptor. I do appreciate staff spending the time both in all their efforts to look at options for electric vehicles, electric, as we talked last, last meeting, electric tools as well in the research that they did to make sure that we're purchasing things that are going to meet the needs of staff, but also be fiscally responsible in terms of their longevity. Any comments from council?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hansa Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to item 10, unfinished business. Item 10-1, Revenue Measures for Funding Core City Services Sidewalk Parcel Tax.
Good evening, city council. Me again.
Good evening. Happy to see you again. You're allowed to put it that way. Thank you for being here.
Thank you all. I talk about the city priority of continuing the successful sidewalk program. We had briefly discussed, or we had discussed, the desire in the long term to expand funding for other infrastructure services that may be related to sidewalks, but at this time that that move was premature. Coming back, in February, you heard from our sidewalk program manager about the completion of the scope of critical repairs throughout the city, and approximately 400 locations, 61,000 square feet of sidewalk repaired in eight phases of the sidewalk program since the inception of the tax. And having this dedicated source of funding enables the city to target these kinds of improvements without competition from other of the city's needs. So the last time you saw me was in March 2020 of this year, just about a month ago. We talked about the analysis we had done with our financial consultant, NBS, and overall, the proposal that staff brought forward was to renew the tax with the current bracketing methodology, considering the priorities that staff brought forth around scope increases for the five-year sidewalk survey that helps inform and target efforts to different parts of the city that where sidewalk repairs are most needed, to include maintenance activities like sidewalk shaving, and to incorporate more programmatic needs like a partial staff cost to the program. We proposed a 10-year renewal as we had discussed the funding picture of the city, and our infrastructure needs are still evolving. And that time horizon allows us to plan for future projects on this longer scale, but allows for revisiting of the tax methodology at a reasonable interval. During our conversation in March, we discussed a number of things. First, and perhaps most dramatically, was to the request to model an alternative methodology with considering the tax rate, considering taxation by lot square foot, as opposed to the bracketed methodology we have now. The council also directed us to, as opposed to waiting for this tax to expire and then beginning the renewal to move that renewal up to the soonest year after the election, which would be beginning in the fiscal year 2025 to '26, year beginning July 2025. Council also provided direction to adjust the annual escalator that's built into the task, the tax. We currently, the tax currently has a 2% or Consumer Price Index or CPI, whichever is lower, to keep up with inflation. Other of our taxes have that benchmarked at 3%, and so adjusting that to 3% is consistent with our other taxes. And lastly, the council directed us to investigate what adding maintenance or repair of Class 1 multi-use pathways, what incorporating that into the tax would, into the scope of activities funded by the tax would look like. So, yes, please, next slide. Thank you. So the, this gives us two alternatives for modeling this tax. This is the first of many tables. I will try to illustrate them with some, I will try to make them come to life. So our first alternative is what we talked about previously, with the incorporation of multi-use pathways into the scope of the tax. Our previous recommendation of a 50% increase to include those other scope items grows to 63%. And the effective date, starting 2025, '26, the annual escalator as mentioned, keeping the methodology the same with a renewal term of 10 years. So with the direction to investigate the by-lot-square-foot alternative methodology, targeting the same revenue target of 63%, we put that scenario together with our consultant, and they were able to model what that would look like for us. Next slide, please. So in investigating this, this is the picture of what that looks like spread across the four main categories of our tax revenue. You see, most notably, we see here that there is something of a shift away, a lowered responsibility in the single-family category, and a shift of that responsibility into the non-residential. What we investigated, and as you read about in the staff report, we were curious about, Albany doesn't have too many larger parcels. We were curious about what made up the bulk of that change, which is over $100,000 in revenue. And we were able to learn from the parcel data that Golden Gate Fields is the largest non-residential parcel in the city, and that may have some impacts considering the unknown nature of Golden Gate Field's future. To break that down a little bit more, Golden Gate Fields holds four parcels in Albany with a total of just under 5.4 million square feet. And under the first scenario, where we would include the CPI increase, or sorry, the annual escalator increase, the 63% revenue target increase, their tax would increase to approximately $583 per year. But under the new scenario, by square foot, the, their tax responsibility would increase to about $73,000 a year, which means that this is about 54% of the non-residential category of tax revenue and about 19% of the overall tax revenue. Again, with the uncertain future of that property, this posed a risk to our revenue scenarios. So when we published this information, Councilmember Jordan reached out and suggested an alternative, which I've noted here as Alternative 3. The idea would be to cap the rate per parcel at a certain benchmark and to apply a certain rate per square foot in order to pair with that. So we had our consultant run this model, and then staff prepared an Alternative 4 to pair with that model, working the other way, where we started with the revenue target of $387,000 and worked backwards to see with that same annual cap what the appropriate rate per lot square foot would be. Now, we were essentially trying to target this, an identical revenue target as Alternative 1 and 2. So when we compare all four scenarios, I'm spitting a lot of numbers at you. We will have time for discussion, I promise. We, when we look at kind of how this shakes out, when we get into Alternative 3 and 4, these sort of new adjustments since last time, the shift is less dramatic than if we did not cap the revenue by parcel. The, we'll see still that there is an increase in the non-residential, and there is something of a decrease in the other three categories. And so for Golden Gate Fields, where does this leave us? In, as we saw in Alternative 1 and 2, there was a large shift in their tax responsibility, leaving 19% of the city's revenue in this tax, excuse me, vulnerable to the nebulous future of that property. Should the property become non-taxable, that 19% would, revenue would be lost. But under Alternatives 3 and 4, where the revenue is capped at a certain rate, sorry, where the tax per parcel is capped, the percentages of the overall and of non-residential become much more reasonable. So, bearing all this in mind, the, we've discussed and come to consensus that the expanded scope items are a priority for funding the program more holistically in light of our general fund situation, that the 63% revenue target is appropriate to fund those activities, that a 10-year term allows us to plan on this longer scale. 3% escalator is consistent with the way we do special revenue taxes. So those are consistent across methodologies that we may adopt. Considering the four scenarios that we modeled, I'm happy to talk through any questions you might have, but the, and pursue methodology choices as directed by the council based on this information. At the end of the day, our priority is continuing a successful program that without this funding would not be able to exist in the city, and make that as, work as well and for the longer term as we can. So, what are our next steps? Following tonight's discussion, we will, staff will move forward with our legal counsel to prepare the measure text and prepare an update to the ordinance for voter approval. We've included a draft of the sidewalk policy update reflecting the changes that we've discussed already. And then we will bring this back one more time to you to adopt, to put on the ballot approximately in June. And then you will be on the run-up to the election in November. So I'm happy to discuss, answer questions. I have more tables after this, so I'd like to open it up to you, and thank you very much.
Okay, Nick, council for questions.
I'm all just starting to say I love me some tables. Thank you for having NBS run that, that other scenario, and then adjusting it to the desired increase. Questions on other aspects? As framed, with the, as written or as proposed in draft, obviously, would the measure allow money, revenue to be spent on the narrow path on the Greenway? I mean, that's not technically a sidewalk, or is it a sidewalk? What is it? You know, it's not a Class 1, so.
So the narrow path, is this the one sort of between the, what we call the Greenway and?
Masonic.
No, Masonic. So we wrote that in there specifically to just be Class 1s. And our thought process around that is similar to the sidewalk program. We're not fixing the whole thing. We're fixing discrete defects that we, that we look. So my sense is that we would probably want to, if we want to upgrade that other path, and it does look a little tired, that would be more of a capital-type project.
Okay.
But if that path were to be upgraded, would that then be considered a sidewalk? And then as such, we could do minor repairs?
Yeah, my guess is, once that would be upgraded, we would, it would fall into either one of those buckets.
Thank you. That was, I think that was the question I raised last time, and you've very clearly made the point that that would eat up all the money that we would collect. And so that's really a CIP program.
And I think that would, there's plenty of places around the city with that similar type situation, and I think we'd be quickly focused on those rather than the defects. And, and I think we'd be quickly focused on those rather than the defects.
I'm on that, the class one, the new sec, segment of Courtney's Creek path is not a class one technically.
No, that one's, and that one's a little tricky because my, that one is part of this MOU that we have, um, with UC and City of Berkeley that has sort of a different funding regime.
Yeah, so this wouldn't necessarily apply to any of the segments that are in Albany along Courtney's Creek then? Is that what I'm gathering, or?
Right, because the segments in Albany are actually within UC property. So, um, and that's why we have the MOU and each agency has specific responsibilities and funding associated with that.
Would it apply to the new Jackson path? I mean, it's probably not going to be, need maintenance in 10 years, but you never know.
You know, that would, and I don't have full knowledge of that other one, but my sense is that, um, my understanding is we'll have a easement, a formalized easement. So I think that sort of makes it more ours than, um, UC's and sort of outside that other funding mechanism, so. That's, we'd obviously probably want to talk with Mala about that, but, um, that's what I would, um, look at.
Okay, great.
Any other council questions? I have, uh.
Sorry, yeah, I was, I just, um, we talked about potentially including allowance for sidewalk widening. I hadn't realized, I think the previous language included sidewalk upgrade, which I presume would up, would sidewalk upgrade, which is included in this draft. I went back and looked at the previous, the existing, and was like, oh, that's in there as well. So with sidewalk upgrade, could the city spend money on widening a sidewalk? Would it fall under, be legal under that sidewalk upgrade? And maybe that's a question to answer now, but to look at or to answer now, if you want.
It seems like it would, but we could also make that clear in the purpose, couldn't we?
So we read that, I think that's in the ordinance piece, is that? We, in the draft of the policy, we wrote it specifically in that, and I think, I think.
Okay, okay.
I mean, we can adopt that at a council level, the policy, so that clarifies that point.
Yes, I don't know, how do, how does the ordinance and the policy work together? I mean, I guess that's what I was concerned about.
The policy is an exhibit to the ordinance, so, so we would want to have that clear. And it does say widening sidewalks to five feet were feasible and appropriate in the red line version.
I guess I was just concerned, I mean, we can't, we can't put anything we want into exhibit A. It's got to be supported, I presume, by the ordinance. Like, we couldn't say, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna spend this on, I don't know, dinner for everybody or whatever, I mean.
And it wouldn't really be the sidewalk in the parcel tax.
Well, right, but I'm saying what I, I'm guessing.
I'll sit on the sidewalk, have a dinner.
I'm guessing whatever, whatever is in attachment A has to be, comport with what is in the ordinance.
Correct.
So I wanted to make sure there was language in the ordinance that supports including widening in the, in the attachment A in the policy. That was my concern. Which again, doesn't have to be answered now.
Yeah, and I can double check. I think the, I think the ordinance is, is a little bit more broad and then the attachment is, has the specificity. But we can confirm that there's nothing that conflicts in the ordinance such that the exhibit can.
Right, I just want to make sure it's sufficiently broad that it covers that, that specific feature. Yeah.
Yes, I'm also a little, I mean, I, I think we should have that in the link, oh, that's, we're going into discussion, sorry. Uh, I did, I did have a question for staff. So there essentially, we're asking for a 13% increase in revenue. Is that solely because we're including class one? Or is that also because we're suddenly asking you to explicitly include expanding sidewalks potentially to five feet?
So based on estimates of program activities, the original proposal was to increase by 50%. And then when calculating in, uh, again, approximations of what, uh, also including repairs for class one multi-use pathways would, added the 13% as well. We essentially, um, bench, we had previously brought to you revenue targets of 25, 50, 75, 100% recommending 50, and we, uh, we found that we needed more than 50, less than 75, so benchmarking at 63%.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I just, we can, uh, open it up, I guess, for, uh, one more question?
Well, I guess, I just, because you raised that, I mean, my, my understanding is it's permissive for widening, but I wouldn't expect widening to be used in the money until year 10 or something like that. I mean, it's basically to have that available when the sidewalks get to whatever level of repair some future council teams, okay, let's move on to upgrading now.
Not seeing any other council questions, we'll open up for a public comment. No public comment. Oh, and I was so excited. We had so many people in the room at the beginning of this regular meeting. So not seeing any public comment, we'll move back to council discussion.
So I'll, I'll offer on the structure and thank you again for, um, running that alternative structure. The 6,000, that was just a number to put out there to get going on. 6,000 is a maximum tax per, per parcel. Um, and that was based on roughly the largest parcel that I could find that was not the 5 million or whatever, um, square foot parcel, uh, which was about 400,000 square feet and a cent and a half per square foot. So I think, um, if I recall, it was 1.68 or something cents per square foot was alternative four. I don't know if you could bring that table, or if, or if you know it, you can just, I don't expect.
It would be helpful for me to see that.
Okay, yeah.
The six, 6,000, um, cap equates to approximately 366,000 square feet. So we could certainly adjust the, um.
Bump it, bump it up, yeah.
Either way.
Yeah, so I was thinking if, if we keep the, if the rate remains the same.
So it's, yeah, 0.01, so 1.64 cents, 1.64.
So maybe if we make it 7,000 dollars a parcel is the max, then that would be, that would capture that largest, second largest parcel in Albany in its entirety. Because like I say, it was about 400,000 square feet. That would also generate a little bit more revenue to compensate a little bit. You know, we'd overshoot slightly, very slightly, because there are a few big parcels that are not Golden Gate Field parcels. And so that will overshoot the 63% a little bit, so that if Golden Gate Fields goes away, we're still close to 63%.
We can, uh, if the direction is to adjust the cap to 7,000, we can adjust the model so that the appropriate per lot square foot rate in conjunction with the cap would be applied.
I guess what I'm, I'm thinking is, is maybe set the rate with the, set the rate so that it's, um, the cap is based on a 400,000 square foot property, approximately, you can round it to whatever you want. Then set the rate so that it generates more revenue than 63%? Like, split the difference on Golden Gate Fields. So if Golden Fields had, goes away, you know, we're, we're generating half again as much from Golden Gate Fields as we need. If it goes away, then we're, we're getting less, rather than if it goes away, we're going entirely under the 63%. I don't know if that's making sense, but.
I'm, I'm following you.
Okay, okay, yeah, so that would be my, uh, suggestion for the moment.
400,000 is 9.18 acres. When we get to lot sizes that big, I often switch from square feet to just pure acres.
Sounds good.
Round to nine or round to 10, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm okay with 400 or 450 or 500, but at some point, at some point, you just change the uni- unit.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I just stuck with it because it's a square foot tax, so.
I mean, just talked about budget deficits and not having enough sugar sweet beverage tax. Uh, I also want to think about this from the approach of how we, uh, talk with the community about this. And I think saying that it's a 50% increase is a lot easier to explain, well, how we ended up at 63% increase? In total rep, I guess, I guess it is, in the end, for most property owners, it's going to be a decrease. Potentially a decrease. Oh, yes, there we go.
So I didn't include this in the ma, I thought this would be a little too detailed for the main discussion, but you'll see from this table that, of course, we have the, um, the, if we made no changes at all, we've started that as our control. And these are approximately the brackets that, uh, we already have. Of course, alternatives, um, two through four, we're using an average, so. With the estimates, but you'll see that in general, um, al- alternative one, which would essentially be, again, renewing with that increase, keeping the normal bra, the current brackets, and then two through four, the, uh, by lot square foot models. For the sort of more average, uh, for the, the smaller, more average, single family categories, the rates will be lower than, uh, this increase, be lower than alternative one. And when we get into the non-residential, that's when we start to see, um, those brackets increase more, more.
So it's not a 50% increase for any particular owner of residence? As you see, it, it varies, but so for like the 2,500 square foot lot, it's going up by $7 on 32, so it's coming up like 25% for a quarter. So in that way, you can't really just say, well, it's a 50% increase or 63% increase.
Yes, so this wouldn't necessarily be a 50% increase to rates as flat. We're targeting the revenue necessary to fund the program.
Right. Um, I'm surprised to see the average condo double. Is, so is that based on totaling all the, all the properties that are multifamily and then dividing it by the number of residences? Because I, I did this calculation for Gateview and for Bayside Commons and for Bridgewater. I'm looking up the size of their properties and the number of units. And, uh, it wasn't that big an increase when I did that, but.
The, um, the consultant, I would have to go back to my spreadsheets, which clearly I don't have, but, uh, the consultant, the way the consultant, mm, I would like to confirm with the consultant before quoting their methodology here. But my sense is that the, the idea is the size of the parcel and then divided by the number of units. Okay, modeling it on lot square foot.
Right, and so that number would be all the multifamily parcels.
By, by.
Divided by all the units was how you would get to that average.
I think the ones that, I think what's screwing it off is the townhouse and small multifamily.
Hmm, okay.
It's probably going to be that kind of number.
Okay, okay, I see.
If you think of a fourplex on a 5,000 square foot lot.
Right.
Like, or, or at that average over 5,000, like, that's, I did one 17 by four and that's a, more or less half, right?
But there's not that many of those compared to, I mean, if that's all multifamily, I mean, I don't know. Interesting, anyway, I'd be interested in having more.
Do a lot of data now.
Yeah, more, more on that. So yeah, those, those are my thoughts on that, the structure.
Understood.
I, I think in some ways, I, um, I mean, I think I raised this last time and I, questioned going with 50% increase as opposed to just keeping it, the revenue where it was. I think I understood last time why we were going to 50%. Let's go ahead and just take it on right now. I am more nervous jumping even further. I mean, now we're getting even further away from no increase. And I understand staff did the analysis, okay, if we include the class ones. But the reality is, I mean, like, the class ones are not that old. Now, I get the class one on the Loney Greenway needs some work, particularly on the decomposed granite and whatnot. But I just, again, wonder, like, I like the system of going by lot size. I think that's a gr, I like this cap because I think it is, um, I think that number needs to be set somewhere because at some point, you, you, both from the fiscal responsibility of like, what happens if Golden Gate Fields no longer provides any taxes? But also giving them incentive to be like, hey, highest best use as you move forward, right? If you're not going to become something that's publicly owned or non-taxable. So I'm, I'm inclined with alt, alternate three. I get that we just talked again about a deficit, and so alternate four would get us more money, but, I mean, if, if we're being true to our taxes, we're actually spending it only on sidewalks and these mobility options that are not within the street. And I would say if we start to find that the class ones start to eat up a lot of that budget, we're going to be renewing this in years probably, because I don't think we'll wait till 10 years to renew it. So there's a chance to change the numbers then, if we need to. We'll also have a better sense of, okay, we've gone through the less critical sidewalk repairs. Some new critical things have happened, like, how are we doing on the numbers? I, I just really want to make sure we can pass this.
Yeah, I mean, I would say this has a, a nexus with the general fund. I presume, I don't know, it's a question, I guess, that the 13% also includes, in the theme of what's happening here, includes the, the staff time to work on that, which we don't currently have. So this actually, passing this will actually help the general fund, which I think is great because I think we need to do that basically every election because of Prop 13. Now, it's not going to be a huge help, but it's going to be some help.
Yeah, so, so we put this together, what we tried to do is model this after some of our other programs to make it sort of self-sufficient and not really, um, competing with other funding. You know, in terms of, you know, is it 63, 60? I, I think that gets a little more difficult and more of an art of figuring it out because, yes, we're trying to project out what our annual spend is over a 10-year time horizon with kind of what we have, the state, we have it right now. So, um, are intense to make it a holistic program. And, um, you know, we, we tried to be, you know, as conservative but, but, um, holistic as we could to, um, set what the revenue requirement would be.
Having run the campaign for the previous one, I, I don't remember what P1 passed with. It was 78% and something like that. I'm, I mean, yes, after running campaign, always have to run a campaign. But I'm not, I'm not that concerned that a diff, that 50% increase versus a 63% increase is going to make, make that kind of a difference. And that isn't how I would campaign for it anyway. I would campaign on, you know, this is the additional things that are included. Sidewalk widening, last one paths, decomposed granite shoulders, you know, things like that. You know, you, it's a campaign on what people are getting, you know, what are you going to get?
I agree, I often think about the, how will the other side campaign against it? Which we are, this, these numbers are the percentages that are present. It's essentially saying anyone who owns commercial property will likely be funding a no on this.
Yeah, I mean, that's always a possibility. They didn't unmeasure K, which was epically larger than this. And I would welcome those entities to come oppose the measure. I think that would probably help it rather than hurt it politically.
Any other council discussion? Does someone want to make a, do we need to make a motion or are we just giving direction to staff, I guess?
So I had, had one other item, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, which is, you know, we often use the colloquial oath. You know, more, well, this, this existing tax has a low income exemption, but it's not really a low income exemption, it's a very low income exemption and rebate. And I would like this renewal to take the first step of actually providing a low income, like, half exemption or half rebate. The low income is 50% to 80%, a very median income. Very low, very low income is below 50 or 50% or below. And, uh, so I would like to, in doing that, I'm certainly not going to ask staff to, if I'm, if I'm here, which I may not be, ask staff to really push the low income down because it's going to be, you know, a very small amount. But I would like to start here so that we start making that a habit of including it in new tax measures and authorization so that eventually we have some sort of meaningful, witty step for low in, actual low income households as it's defined.
For very low income, are we, we use, am I correct in understanding, we use PG&Es? We piggyback onto a PG&E program that, or we?
We use it, it's like a, it's like a HUD something, or right? Yeah, it's HUD, it's a HUD.
No, no, but I understand the HUD sets a number, but in terms of verifying, is someone very low or low? very low or low income?
So...
I thought I remember us talking before that we used a PG&E as a proxy.
So we use PG&E for proxy for the franchise agreement, for the waste agreement, and the reason for that was simplicity of implementation, but PG&E's income limits are lower than the HUD limits. So advantage there was, Waste Management Alameda County was set up to do that, and there are far more households enrolled in care than we as a city have been able to enroll in these other things, and so even though it was a lower income limit, it was reaching more people, so that was sort of the rationale for that. But all of our tax measures are based on the, the area median income for the county from HUD, which is a higher level.
And then an applicant comes to the city and...
Our, our third party actually, NBS, processes the discounts and exemptions.
So they could process a different category as well?
Correct.
I, I, sorry, I, I ask because at that point, why, why would we not be doing low 50, 50 to 80, 80 to 120, which are usually the three main categories, and say that there is a percentage discount for each of those?
Sure, that's a policy.
If, if we're going to do it, like, why, why not?
Right, I mean, I, I would say 80 to 120 is moderate income, so that's basically the median income, so I, I mean, not inclined to provide tax relief at that level, but that's a policy decision. I mean, you can, you can make it whatever you want, but my proposal is to include low income, a half, half exemption, half rebate for low income.
The last time I looked at it, 120% AMI for Alameda County, you can't afford a house in Albany. So it's still...
Right, but it's also for people who rent. I mean, mo, most households in Albany rent, they don't own, although this, this tax relief's not available to households in University Village, because University Village households don't pay our taxes. So there's a little bit of statistics lies damn lies. I mean, it's, it's more, I think it's like 3,500 households that own, and outside of University Village, there's 2,500 households or so that, that rent.
I believe we would need to rerun the models if we add, add additional exemptions. Is that correct?
I believe so. I, I'm...
Was the model run with the very low income exemption even?
It was run with the existing exemption.
And what, what number of properties or households were included? Was it the actual enrollment currently, or what's indicated by the census?
I would have to look into the details with the consultant of what was included in these alternatives. I have the data for the current year's exemptions if you're interested.
Yeah, because the, the number of households that are eligible, according to census data, is like four times, five times the number that are actually enrolled, so it'd be interesting to know which of those NBS used in coming up with these alternatives. Yeah, that might necessitate a moving up the per square foot bit. The per, per square foot rate if we included exemption for low income, exemption, or half exemption, half rebate for low income. I don't, I don't know how many households that is.
If there are no other discussion, entertain a motion.
Would you like a motion, or I'd...
I'd like some council consensus.
Guess that we can do that by motion, that's sort of the standard way. Okay. So I move alternative four with the adjustment of setting the annual cap based on a 400,000 square foot parcel approximately, rounded in the nearest $1,000, let's say, and setting the rate per lot square foot based on full exemption rebate for very low income households and half exemption rebate for low income households, and setting the rate so that it generates revenue that is above a 63% increase by half the amount that would be coming from Golden Gate Fields.
Seconded.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hansa Romero?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, staff, for that presentation and this discussion. See, we'll move on, we have no new business tonight, so we'll move on to council subcommittee reports and reports on appointed representation of Albany. And I did not track who I asked first last time, so. Oh, so you're volunteering there, and that...
The ABAG Housing Committee met last week and passed, is looking at the right meeting, passed the expenditure plan for the regional bond with the labor standards that were added. Those were labor standards modeled after AB 2011, which give prevailing wage and some healthcare benefits, and that's for Bafa's portion of that bond money. There was some discussion about extending that, those requirements to cover the rest of that money, as well as what exactly those requirements would be, so there will be efforts in Sacramento to change the enabling legislation for Bafa, which will be interesting. There was also, we were presented on the polling for the bond, which showed that there's pretty consistent over several polls, about 50% support for it, which means that it is a doable goal, but one that requires a lot of work, and that will depend on whether ACA one passes. There's also an ABAG legislation meeting, or legislative committee meeting, the big one there was discussing SB 1031, which is the enabling legislation for a regional transit revenue measure to essentially improve transit and expand it, but also make up for deficits that most transit agencies across the bay are seeing, so make sure that they do not fall down essentially. So that is being written and is, and there were some changes that were requested to bring it more in line with MTC's guidance and what they've been hearing there, but that is moving forward and will eventually hopefully be passed.
Councilmember Lopez?
Nothing major to report on my end. We did have our mosquito abatement district meeting, thankfully got a new appointee to, our new trustee to fill in for City of Livermore, and hopefully by the end of April, we'll have additional person to fill in for City of Oakland in place of Jan, who had unfortunately passed away, which should make it significantly easier for us to not stress about making quorum. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Look to Councilmember Hansa Romero?
I have no updates.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, yeah. The, what is it, Programs, Policy and Legislative Committee of the Almighty County Transportation Commission met, one of the agenda items was, again, the, the next plan for expenditures, and we discussed equity, and I again raised the issue of sidewalks being a part of our transportation system, and that imposing the cost of sidewalk repair on adjacent properties, you know, is particularly inequitable, and so I'm hoping that the, the agency will take that and include it in some fashion in the plan.
Thank you. I attended an Alameda County Mayor's Conference in San Leandro, and we had a great presentation from Ava Community Energy. The soon-to-retire director presented, but it was great to just get an update from, from Ava Community Energy and, and understand all the efforts that they've been doing, a lot of great discussion. Alameda County Mayor's Conference also had an executive meeting that, talking a little bit about the bylaws that affect us, primarily because when Alameda County Mayor's Conference appoints mayors to various regional boards, we are at a slight disadvantage because we have rotating mayor, so those appointments only happen every two years or every four years, and so if you are not mayor when that is happening, it is very hard to get appointed to one of those boards to represent, because the existing language is a sitting mayor, either from an elected mayor or a rotating mayor, gets first preference for those positions, and as such, any of us as council members in theory could apply, but unless no mayor chooses to want to serve on those, there's really no chance for you joining. The conflict became when a rotating mayor was appointed, what happened when it came for reappointment, and that person may or may not be still the rotating mayor for that community? And so some language was drafted, it will come back to us, I believe, next month for the whole conference to vote on, to change the bylaws, to put that a mayor from a rotating seat who has served on as an appointment can have the same preferential treatment as a mayor from an elected city, so that they can continue to serve in that role. And that, it really came to a head a couple months ago. It had come up in the past, but essentially mayors from an elected, the elected mayors chose to not run and allowed the, the, the former mayor to continue serving, and now it's just going to be explicitly stated that they are allowed to have the same priority, and so that the mayors as a group when we vote were not confined by the bylaws, which implied that you had to take the elected mayor versus a mayor who, a former mayor who had been serving, so, inside baseball there. But I think it's important for you all to understand, one, that actually, as council members, if you're not the mayor and there is a board that is representative that you want to serve on, you can submit your name. As it that you'll get it, if you're not a sitting mayor is, is very hard, but you can. And if you choose to, I believe, Councilmember Tiedemann, are you appointed on, to, okay, so should you get reelected, you, and you are not mayor, you would have the opportunity to submit your name again to continue serving. And so that was, I would say, a very, I would say that the, the mayors who were not elected felt like that was a good compromise.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm very enthused, and I'm, if it actually passes, because I guess it hasn't passed yet.
Hasn't passed yet, but the language is going to be drafted and brought back to the overall group, so. It was, we did mention to the group that the language, what the language was going to be, but we didn't officially vote because the language wasn't clean yet.
Right, so it's going to take at least five elected mayors to pass.
I think it will pass.
I presume the three. I'm just, I just want to say, I'm, I'm grateful, that's very gracious of them to do that. They don't have to do that, they could just maintain their, their toys and say, it's too bad for you, so, that's nice of them.
Yes, thank you for the update, as someone who this very directly affects, I appreciate the work going into it.
That brings, oh, sorry, I always forget on this one, do we take public comment on this one?
Yes.
Okay, so, or do we have any public comment? Okay. Item 13, future agenda items, this again is if any council members or any members, sorry, this is only council members, right? Yes. Any... Correct, sorry. Do we have any public comment on this? Okay. Any future agenda items that people would like to ask staff?
Just, I'll just say that in the city manager's weekly report, you might have seen my name behind items that keep being forthcoming, but then they don't show up, so it's, it's going to happen eventually.
Not sure, is that a promise or a threat, or is that a...
Both.
Sorry, I digress. Item 14, announcement of city meetings and events, a whole series of meeting events are listed in the agenda, in particular, please, the community expo coming up is, was a great event last year, and I hope we have great attendance this year as well. And I want to thank all who took a part in today's meeting.
Just want to bring up one quick thing that I didn't, didn't see covered earlier, and I just, I had thought about it, is Coffee with the Cops tomorrow, is that correct? Where we're talking about the, the license plate.
Talking about the flock cameras?
Yeah. So I just want to make sure that people are aware of that, if they hadn't seen that come out yet, so.
Great, thank you. And without, we'll move on to thank you all who took part in today's meeting. If you or loved one is experiencing thoughts of suicide, a mental health or substance use crisis, or any other kind of emotional distress, call or text 988 to speak to a trained crisis specialist. And with that, we'll adjourn today's meeting. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor.